For the pledge of allegiance. Excuse me.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Nice job, guys. Okay, we'll call the meeting to order at 7:04 PM. And we'll start with public comment. For the public comment, which for those of you that are new to the room, try to keep it to two to three minutes. State your name and address for the record, and we'll start off with Seymour residents first, just out of courtesy. And just make sure you talk into the microphone so they can hear you at home.
Sure. All right, hi, my name is Melissa Wolf. I live at Six Moss Avenue, and I live there with my husband and our two children. We have lived there for about thirteen years now, and we are the property that is directly along the border of Sacron Park. So our backyard shares property line with Sacron Park. We did hear on some social media chatter and through listening to the stream from the meeting a couple of weeks ago about some of the discussions on introducing a dog park at Sacron's pond. And we just wanted to share that as residents next to that park for as long as we have been, that it is a very valuable park in our quiet little neighborhood. We can attest to the fact that it is utilized. I know it seems to be the kind of forgotten about, neglected park of Seymour. And it certainly has had its issues over the years. I know goose droppings has been the primary concern. But I can certainly speak to the fact that it is a park that is used by the residents in the neighborhood, including ourselves. People of all ages, young, our children grew up going to the park. They've done their first bike rides there, started playing their soccer practices and football and baseball on that field, fishing and ice skating, just this winter as well, ice skating. So it's, there's lots of kids that come down there and make use of that park for lots of various reasons. There's also a lot of elderly residents in the neighborhood who daily walk and go walk around the pond. There's a lot of birds and wildlife that they like to kind of take in. I know it's something that is a little bit of our hidden gem, and we'd love to be able to keep it that way. And I would certainly say too that since the security measures that were taken a couple of years ago in cutting back the trees to increase the visibility of the park, because there was, you know, was some vandalism. And since that's been done, we definitely noticed a big difference in just the use of the park for what it's intended for. That was a great help to that, having all that trimmed back, having that fence taken down too, and having the fence kind of re-put in. And I can certainly say that we would, we would miss it if it was converted to something for the animals of Seymour. We're animal people, we have a dog, we love dogs. And we certainly think a dog park is a great idea for Seymour. But we certainly would miss having Sacron Pond for the use of the residents in that neighborhood. It would be definitely something that would, would be missed, and it would be sad to see go. So, just wanted to add that into a list of considerations when considering the dog park there. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Is there any other public comments?
Just state your name and address again, just so we have. My name is Eric Wolf, and Six Moss Ave. And similar to what my wife just said, we live next door. I'm not going to repeat too many of her concerns. We're absolute dog people. We go to, I, I like with my black lab, we take him to dog parks all over. And it seems to me that the location of all those dog parks, Southbury, Cheshire, Shelton, they're certainly all located at quite a larger distance from homes. There's a number of homes right in the area. And also just on the usage of the park, you know, there's people there all the time. There's people that are ice skating this winter, ice fishing this winter. Just the other day, there was a dad teaching his kid how to, you know, hit the T-ball. I bring my boys over there, that's where they learned, you know, how to play soccer. The soccer, I know, Mr. Bruno, you're part of the, or you were formerly part of the Soccer Association. They actually did practice there. You know, Beth Carson sent a team down there to practice all last fall before the, you know, there actually wasn't any goose problems there last fall. I guess maybe they didn't nest there in time or whatever. So it is not necessarily being utilized by a formal public, you know, association, but certainly the neighborhood finds it extremely valuable. The, uh... The other idea, you know, it just, if it ever did happen, I definitely would just want to make sure, you know, safety for my family was involved. You know, the fence that's right between the park and then the river and then our house is only a three-foot park, you know, and I just want to make sure that, you know. It seems to be, again, just to be really close, my kids running around the backyard, my dog running around the backyard with other dogs, that close just doesn't seem like a decision that would be wise. There's also the basketball court there, and I don't know how you would manage a basketball court like right next to a dog park. So just some thoughts that, you know, I wanted to bring up. The last thing was, her father and my father-in-law works down in New Jersey. He has ran a TruGreen Kemalon branch for the last, I think it's gone on thirty-seven years now. I called him up because I know that the geese keep coming up. And he gave me the name of a product that they use with success for keeping away the geese. They use it on corporate, you know, lawns and also in public places down in New Jersey. And it's, I have the flyer here, printed it off, if you wanted to take it and pass it on to Public Works or not. But he has used it with massive success to keep the goose problem away. But I will say the last few years, it hasn't been as bad, and I'll echo the security. Ever since you cut those, the tree lines down and saw that fence, there's definitely been an increased police presence. We're firsthand, you know, I spoke here a few years ago about the skate park. The troubles then were certainly more significant, but in the last few years, it's been just a wonderful family park. We actually have no problem letting the boys, you know, run across the creek and go play there by themselves and, you know, keep an eye on them. But I think it's, it would be a valuable asset to lose. But believe me, I'd love to have a dog park in town, you know. I think, I drive out to Southbury most weekend mornings in the, in the summertime. And something like that would be amazing in town. I just strongly feel that it wouldn't be wise for Sacron's if that is a consideration. Thank you.
Thank you. If you want to leave that sheet with Rory.
Sure.
We'll take a look at it. Thank you. Okay, is there any other public comment?
Frederick McRosskey, 216 Derby Avenue, Derby, Connecticut. I live on Derby Ave., Derby, Connecticut, which is Route 115. And I just want to say that I'm asking, I will be going to all-town meetings or whatever and talking to everybody because we have to ask our state representatives to actively oppose the tolls. Unfortunately, some of our laws are written in such a way where if there's no action taken, they pass. And really, that's a lack of representation. So all our representatives can say, "We didn't vote for the tolls," and they're telling the truth. But a lack of action will allow this bill to pass by default. So if it dies in committee, unlike other laws or in other areas, it actually will come to fruition. Now, looking at this map, I see two dots around Seymour. So Route 8 will definitely be an expense to use for Seymour residents. And my concern is the dot that's towards the southern part of Seymour on the Ansonia-Seymour line. What that could do is that could turn Derby Ave. and Seymour, depending on where the gantry is placed in relationship to the Wakely Ave. exit in Ansonia, it could turn Derby Ave. into a bit of a nightmare, simply because people are not, if it's in the, if it's in the north of the Wakely Ave. entrance, people are going to use Derby Ave. so they can save that eighty cents, dollar, twenty-five cents, or whatever the toll's going to be. Also, my other concern is that people will start using Route 115 as an alternative to Route 8 to save themselves a buck, almost two bucks maybe. And during the day, Route 115 is going to become a parking lot. So your main street all the way down is going to become a parking lot. And in the evening, people are going to say, "I can get there almost as fast as if I take 115, save myself a buck or two, then take Route 8, and 115 at night is going to become a Speedway." So what's basically, in my opinion, going to happen is people are going to want to save the few extra pennies and possibly endanger, if not inconvenience, endanger some of the residents along Route 115 and possibly Wakely Ave. in Ansonia. And that might spread depending on how they place the gantry onto Derby Ave. and Seymour as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Where are these at? Oh, no, you come up, just don't start up. No, you can come up, you can come up. Just, I don't think the microphones are on. I don't think the microphones are on.
No, it wasn't.
I just want to make sure, well, you wouldn't hear it, but I want to make sure they can hear you. There we go. Okay.
This is off the clock.
No, not a problem.
Ed Grandy, 347 South Main Street in Seymour. Just to hear another side of this, we need the tolls because the roads are a mess. I'm assuming if they go to tolls, it's going to be EZ Pass somehow, cameras to catch people and to blow it off. But, uh, we need the money. The technology is there to filter out local residents, out-of-state plates, Connecticut plates, just catch trucks. I'm sure the technology exists to filter that out of the EZ Pass. So we need the money. And while you're at it, if you're looking for money, Connecticut's dragging behind all these other states. We got, we just got medical marijuana, and recreational is around the corner. It's all around us, driving out of state, so you're going to want to push for that, catch a piece of that. Okay.
Thank you. Is there any other public comment? Excellent.
My name is Colin Wolf, and I live on Six Moss Ave. I want Sacron to stay because me and my brother love going there and playing soccer, football, ice skating, ice fishing, and we love going on the trails. And I would be sad to see it turn into a dog park.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Colin. Is there any other public comment? Nope, I can't hear any public comment. We'll move on to item number four. Approved minutes from the February 19, 2019 regular meeting. Have a motion to do so. Motion by Anne Marie, second by Al. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, cheer votes aye, motion passes four to zero. Item number five, approved minutes from the February 19, 2019 public hearing. Have a motion to do so.
Considered.
Motion by Anne Marie, second by Al. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor? Opposed, abstained, cheer votes aye, motion passes four to zero. Item number six, approved minutes from the February 19, 2019 ordinance committee meeting. Have a motion to do so.
Considered.
Motion by Anne Marie, second by Stefan. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor? Opposed, abstained, cheer votes aye, motion passes four to zero. Item number seven is First Elections Report. I wasn't feeling well today, so I didn't put the report together, so I apologize. Item number eight, discussion, take possible action regarding fire marshal inter-local mutual assistance agreement. We have our current deputy fire marshal and future fire marshal, Tim Wallace. So, Tim, if you want to come up, make the presentation, and then we'll just ask any questions at that point.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Thank you for having me here tonight to speak for this. As you've seen it before, our Corporation Council has looked through it. This agreement would be between the towns of Seymour, Derby, Ansonia, Shelton, Beacon Falls, Bethany, and Oxford. The purpose of this would be to mirror a current agreement that our local police departments have to allow mutual aid for the investigation of fires. This would reduce the need for us to call in other assets. Currently, we have a unit from the Connecticut State Police, the Fire Investigation and Explosion Unit that we lean on quite heavily when we get a large event-type fire. This is more for those middle-of-the-road type fires where we're going to be there for quite some time, but we definitely, or we don't necessarily need their assets or their resources as far as manpower. This will allow us to help each other out. It'll allow us to help each other out, go in, and very often what we do after fires is labor-intensive. It's getting another set of hands. Also, we use a guide, which I won't bore you to death with the details, but it's NFPA 921. And in that, it allows us to perform fire investigations, and it's kind of our guide, and it is our guide, on how we perform our duties. In there, we're required to have peer review. There's been many times at 3:00 in the morning where I'm in a dark room with no power by myself going, "This seems to make sense," and I don't have someone to bounce the idea off of. So this agreement will bring in other resources at no cost to us pulling in other resources, which is huge. We know everything in this day and age is moving towards regionalization depending on what it is. So this will allow us to help each other out and render a legal opinion. Currently, we do it as it is now and give opinions that aren't legally binding, that really have no resource, and could jam us up later on. I've been called to other communities to help out, to take a look at something at 4:00 AM because they're confused. And I've done the same. This agreement will allow us to work together and actually have something on paper that will protect all of us, reduce liability to communities, and give us extra resources at no cost to the town. If anyone has any specific questions, please don't hesitate.
Emre, you reviewed the agreement, and you're comfortable with everything, correct?
Yes, I am. I actually drafted it. I drafted the agreement. We disseminated it to the various communities through Fire Marshal Wedowitz, to the different fire marshals. The only Corporation Council I heard back from who had a question or two that we resolved was my friend Kevin from Oxford and Condon, Kevin Condon. And he was good with it after we talked through it. And as far as I'm concerned, the agreement is a good agreement that will provide a good framework for the fire marshals to work together and pool their collective knowledge on cause and origin investigations.
Okay. So any board questions, whether it be for Rich or for current deputy fire marshal Wallace?
Yeah, is there any, is there any potential downside whatsoever to this agreement?
I can't really see any. We're still covered, just like when firefighters or law enforcement go out of town. Workers' comp still covers us as the person leaving town, so we are protected in that fashion. This is thankfully, and will continue that way, this is not something that's going to be used every day. It may get used once or twice a year, it may get used a dozen times a year. I can't put an exact number on it. But this isn't going to be one of the fire marshals running to another town on a daily basis. It's not for those giant fires because we have the state police as an extra resource. And many small fires, we don't need that secondhand. But there are times, again, I refer back to that 4:00 AM fire where you're in a room by yourself going, "I'd really love someone to prove my opinion wrong so we can learn," or, you know, "maybe look at it from a different point of view." I don't see a negative.
Thanks. Yeah, this is similar to the agreement we did, I think it was last year with the police. I mean, different side of towns, but same parameter, same, same principle. Cool. So, can I, anything else? Okay, at this point, I don't entertain a motion. Let the Board of Selectmen approve the inter-local agreement for fire marshal services between the cities of Ansonia, the town of Beacon Falls, the town of Bethany, the city of Derby, the town of Oxford, the town of Seymour, and the city of Shelton as presented.
Considered.
Motion by Stefan, second by Anne Marie. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, cheer votes aye, motion passes four to zero. Thank you very much, Tim. Have a good night. So, Tim, will sign this and have it ready for, swing away in the morning, we'll have it?
Yep.
Perfect, thank you. Okay, item number nine. Discussion, take possible action regarding a resolution recommending an appropriation and bond authorization of $495,000 for the purchase and installation of interactive touch panels and related equipment for the Seymour Public Schools and upgrades and renovations to various town buildings. So in your packet, bless you, you have a few pieces of information. One is you have a resolution from Bond Council. And then you also have a description of some of the work, excuse me, that is planned to be done. Rob Dyer, the IT director for the town, is here. So, Rob, if you want to come up and just explain to the board, I'm sure you don't have to dummy it down for them as much as you do for me, but kind of what you're going, what the process we're going through, what the value is and why it's important.
Sure. Good evening. So the, I apologize for my appearance. The, the whole point of what we're doing here is the smart boards in the front of the classrooms at grade levels K through 8 currently are at their end of life. We're incurring large costs in replacing them, repairing them, and so on and so forth. They're now at the point where we need to completely remove them and replace them with something. So the, the new technology that's out there is very similar to your TV. Requires no maintenance whatsoever. We don't have to spend $300 on bulbs and replacing them. So what we did was we went out and we solicited bids to replace those, those boards with the new technology, which is a touch panel that we're looking at. And the companies came back with pricing. They were very aggressive. We were looking at possibly $30, $3,200 per board plus install. They came back at around $2,400 a board, including install, and they gave us a seven-year warranty on the, on the devices. So the pricing that we got is unheard of. I heard through the grapevine that they, they lost a very large bid just prior to ours, and they said, "We're not going to lose this one." So they came back, and they were super aggressive. We got four different vendors, I think, pitching three different products. So it was, it was very competitive. So we, we have that money currently in our operating budget on the Board of Ed's side. The pricing that we got back from the company, although their, their principal pricing was, was very competitive, the lease cost that they had given us included a 12% interest rate. So mostly because it's AV equipment, it has almost zero residual dollar value at the end of the lease. So they, those types of contracts, they typically front-load with a ton of interest. So we're looking at the total cost of it. It was around $100,000 to finance. So we, we said, "There has to be a better way to do this," although we could squeeze it into our budget, the operating costs. In our, sorry, in our operating budget, we figured there had to be a better way to do it. So we put our heads together at the summit way back when. And what we came up was, was possibly having the town finance it at a lower interest rate, much lower interest rate, and the Board of Ed just reimbursing the town for that. So that's, that's part one. Part two is the network equipment, the switchgear. There's a program that the Ed's run called Universal Services Fund, E-Rate. It's basically, they, if you ever look at your phone bill, there's a little E-Rate service charge at the bottom of that bill, and it collected tons and tons of money over the years. And now they're, they're putting it out to different categories for schools and libraries to utilize and bring in technology. So we, it's a five-year rotation. They give you a pot of money for each school, and if you don't use the pot of money at the end of the five-year cycle, the money that you have on the table is gone. And the only catch with the, with the money that you use is, well, there's two really, it has to be in a certain category. So it has to, it has to meet a certain requirement to qualify. And the second catch is you cannot finance your portion. And they, they basically use a calculation of your free and reduced lunch population. Seymour's is 60/40, which means E-Rate will cover 60% of the costs of the equipment. Seymour has to pay 40% of the cost. Our 40%, we cannot lease. So we can't, we can't go out and say, "All right, we're going to lease our 40%." It has to come out of our budget funds as a one-time payment. So coincidentally, the, the portion that Seymour would have to pay, the 40%, comes out to roughly $87,000, I think, to replace all of our switchgear. That's utilizing around $200,000 in E-Rate funds that we currently have that have not yet been spent. And we're in our fifth year of that cycle. So if we don't do this, we walk away from that money. So the, the nice thing was that it squeezed in perfectly, it fit very well with the savings that we were going to get if we do the lower financing costs through the town. And we save that $100,000, we can apply that, that savings towards the 40% portion for E-Rate. If anybody has any questions, I'd be happy to answer them if I can.
Does everybody understand that the switch? I think the panels are pretty self-explanatory.
Oh, the, the one thing that I forgot is, uh...
Push it.
Thank you. The, the schools do have some switches that are not end-of-life. We don't have enough of them to continue using them in the schools. But what we will do, as we always do with everything, is we, we will take the existing switches that are not end-of-life, that are GIG, and we will bring them down to the Town Department, so the Police Department, Community Center. Town Hall's going to get some new ones. And then we're going to see how many more we have left over and see if there's, maybe the ambulance might, might need some, or we can use them somewhere else. But the town's going to get actually upgraded switches. They only have 100 meg now, so they're going to get GIG, GIG switches.
So there's some, I was... There's some advantages for us, for our usage as well. So, yeah, we looked at several different ways in which to fund this. We looked at a straight loan out of the, out of fund balance. The issue, we don't want to put too much stress on fund balance. It becomes a cash flow issue. We reached out to Bond Council. We can get a banner or a bond anticipation note, which the Board of Education will pay off directly with their annual payments. As payment, they'll be purchasing some, some of the panels for Town Hall. So we'll have one here, I believe we're going to put one to Community Center, and then one in the emergency operations.
Emergency Operations Center.
Center, so that'll be included in. So, you know, overall, good project, I think. It certainly benefits the Board of Education, benefits the town, and we're doing it in a way that is very fiscally responsible, which is good. So using our, our borrowing power to benefit the Board of Ed. So I want Rob to explain it, so that way if you had any specific technology questions, I'm not the right guy to answer those, so... No questions? Stefan, you can give them a pass?
No, I don't have any questions for Rob. Thank you. This is, it's all pretty straightforward, honestly. I have more questions for you.
What, if I was doing it by myself? That's why I brought him, I wouldn't be able to answer any of your questions.
Rob, I just had a quick one. Do you find that most teachers are using smart boards and they're comfortable with it? They have the appropriate training, they're, they're lasting, they're not breaking down?
They are, yeah, they, they have become an integral part of instruction. I can tell you that we've been band-aiding and bail-wiring them for the past year while we've been waiting for this project. Because it's, it's, I mean, we truly took every possible step that we could take to make sure we tested out every single one of them, made sure that we gave, what we were going to give them is something that they were going to actually use. But I can tell you that when one of them breaks now, they are beating down my door saying, "When are you going to replace it?" When are you, "I can't, I can't teach, I can't this, I can't that." So they're so integrated now into the lessons that if they don't have them, they, they will come after me with pitchforks and fire. So they're going to use them.
Yeah, I just want to make sure, I mean, most educators are comfortable using those in the general...
Oh, yeah. And, and these are actually, they're a step ahead of the, you know, the smart boards are basically just, you display something on a projector, and you can interact with your desktop. These are just, they're so much more advanced in, in what they do. A kid sitting down in the crowd can screencast their Chromebook, you know, if they all have one-to-one computers, which we do. They can screencast their screen up to the, you know, up onto the TV and, and share with the rest of the class. So before, it was only that whatever was on the teacher's desk was now on the, on the TV. Now, the kids can actually share what they're doing, and the kids can collaborate and interact with each other.
Fully interactive, yeah.
So I think they're going to absolutely use it.
I guess one question is, how, how would these be different? You know, what enhancements are there on these as opposed to just a regular smart TV?
Uh, well, for one thing, they're, they're touch-controlled, right? So they're 65 inches, corner to corner. You can interact with them and touch them. They have 10 points of touch. So you can, you can actually have three or four kids all interacting with different parts of the board at any one time. So, so that's one thing that's different. The second thing, and I think the more important thing, is the software that comes along with it and allows, you know, you install it on the computer, the teacher's computer, and it allows them to manipulate. You can go on a virtual tour through Google, what's it called, Google Earth. So you could take them on a virtual field trip if you want, right there in the classroom. So, I mean, it's, it's more the software piece of it and the fact that we no longer have to have the projectors anymore, with the bulbs and the expensive maintenance.
Right, well, I just asked because that's, I mean, that's, that's standard on, on smart TVs now.
So things, so, just so everybody's aware, we, we're not putting this across the entire district. The high school has, we started it about six years ago. Instead of putting smart boards in the high school, we put in smart TVs. And we gave the teachers iPads. And we discovered that that works awesome. It's a great cost savings as far as putting, you know, not putting a smart board in. But we also have to maintain those iPads now on a rotational basis. So it's, it's where these things, we put them in and we leave them, and then they stay there, and there's no component necessary to maintain and update and everything else. It's like your TV. You put your TV in... You put your TV in your house, you know, I've had mine for, you know, ten years now, I haven't touched the thing. So that's kind of what we're shooting for and what we've seen in the TVs at the high school level, but at the elementary and middle school level, we felt that they needed that interactivity and ability to have the kid go up and manipulate the board and share what they're doing. So that's why we kind of did it the way we did it.
Thanks. Anybody else? No? All right, so then I'll read the resolution. All right, actually, Al, I'm going to let you read the resolution because I'm just going to keep coughing.
Town of Seymour Board of Selectmen Resolution recommending an appropriation and bond authorization of four hundred ninety-five thousand dollars for the purchase and installation of interactive touch panels and related equipment for the Seymour Public Schools and upgrades and renovations to various town buildings. Resolved that the Board of Selectmen recommends that the town of Seymour, the town, appropriate four hundred ninety-five thousand dollars for the purchase and installation of interactive touch panels and related equipment for the Seymour Public Schools and upgrades and renovations to various town buildings, the projects. Appropriation may be expended for equipment, materials, demolition costs, installation costs, design and construction costs, window replacements, sewer repairs, boiler repairs, site improvements, professional fees, legal fees, and other costs related to the projects. The Board of Selectmen may reduce the scope of the projects if funds are insufficient to complete the entire projects, and the entire appropriation may be spent on the reduced projects. Further resolved that the Board of Selectmen recommends that the town finance the projects by issuing the town's bonds, notes, temporary notes, or other obligations in the amount not to exceed four hundred ninety-five thousand dollars or so much thereof as may be necessary after deducting grants to be received for the projects.
Yep. Thank you, Al. Okay, can I have a motion to accept the resolution as read? Motion by Anne Marie.
Second.
Second by Al. Is there any discussion?
Yeah, I have a couple of questions.
Sure.
So can, can, Curry, can you just walk us through a little more why we're choosing to go a bonding route with this?
Well, it's not bond, it's, it's a ban, so it's a bond anticipation note. This is a, a vehicle that's used for smaller purchases. It's, it's essentially like cash, the interest rate will be below one percent. It gives you the opportunity to make these purchases, pay them over a certain amount of time, and not have to use your cash reserve. It's actually very common. Bans are generally used even for large purchases before you go out to bond, because it gives you the opportunity then to determine when the right time is to bond. You don't necessarily have to do that right at the point of needing the cash.
So then, are these, are these, or are these not items that have been previously budgeted?
They have not been previously budgeted, no. The, I mean, the Board of Education has a line item for, I believe it's seventy-seven thousand, yeah, to handle what they'll call lease-purchase type things. So the Board of Education could handle this themselves, using their normal pattern, but they would pay twelve percent interest. So I don't see a reason to pay over a hundred thousand dollars in interest when we can do for a number substantially less. Plus, they would not be able to do the switches without doing this financing.
Okay, and my other question then is the four hundred ninety-five thousand, where that number is the two of those things combined?
That is a number that we will use. If you notice, it says in that one line near the bottom, "Or so much thereof as may be necessary after deducting grants to be received for the project." For these resolutions, you always put an amount higher, because then it covers anything that could come up unexpected. We will not use the whole, the full four hundred ninety-five thousand in the ban.
But will we be allowed to use the full four hundred ninety-five thousand, even if we get the grants?
Only for these specific projects.
Right, but the, well, this resolution seems pretty vague. It's actually extremely vague.
I, I'm not going to speak to why Matt Reddor wrote what Matt Reddor wrote. So, I mean, this was vetted by Bond Council, so.
Yeah.
All right. So we sent all the information over to him, he got all the documentations, Rob put together a packet that was actually sent over to both Rob and Bruce, and, Matt and Bruce, geez, not Rob. And Matt is the one that put this together for us.
And so the process now is we would forward this to special town meeting?
Oh, yeah, which is item number ten.
And then after that meeting, if we didn't get a quorum, we would vote to approve this?
It'll come back to the Board of Selectmen, yeah. So we would, so item number ten, assuming we get to that point, we'd hold the special town meeting in two weeks. It would be advertised like a normal town meeting. We would follow the process in the charter.
And now, everything that Rob said did sound, you know, good and beneficial, but I would like to see the bids at some point before.
Yeah, all right. That's not a problem. All right, thanks. Rob, can you do that electronically, the bids? Okay, so we'll get those out tomorrow, tomorrow night?
Before we make our final determinations.
Oh, yeah, we'll have them tomorrow. Thanks. No problem. So any other questions? Thomas? No? Rich, anything you want to add? No? Okay. Okay, hearing none, all in favor? Opposed, abstained, cheer votes aye, motion passes four zero. Thank you, Rob. Item number ten, set special town meeting for Tuesday, March nineteenth, two thousand and nineteen, at six forty-five p.m. regarding a resolution to appropriate four hundred ninety-five thousand for the purchase and installation of interactive touch panels and related equipment for the Seymour Public Schools and upgrades and renovations to various town buildings, and to authorize the issue of bonds, notes, temporary notes, or other obligations in an amount not to exceed four hundred ninety-five thousand to finance said appropriation. Can I have a motion to set the town meeting as suggested? Motion by Stefan, second by Al. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, cheer votes aye, motion passes four zero. Excuse me. Okay, item number eleven, discussion, take possible action regarding the following ordinances. So we have four ordinances, we'll go through them kind of one at a time. The first one is A, section fifteen dash thirteen C, manufacturer's exemption. This one has been sent back to the Board of Selectmen by the Ordinance Committee in its current form. We had a town, or a public hearing on it tonight, which no one made comment on it. So does anyone have any comments or concerns, and we'll start with Rich.
I, I just wanted to point out, you cannot vote on this tonight because we just had the public hearing. So you can vote on it two weeks from now.
It's actually in my note. So any issues whatsoever with this one? I think we're all pretty comfortable with it. No? Okay. So then, so there's no motion. Rich?
Right.
We just leave it as is?
Put it on your next agenda.
Next agenda for next time. Okay, perfect. Okay. B, historical landmark preservation. This is one that the Ordinance Committee's brought back to the Selectmen, made some changes. We increased, as we talked about, the years from fifty to a hundred and fifty. We did get some public comments with regards to this ordinance, all mostly positive. I don't think there was any negative comments whatsoever. The Ordinance Committee is comfortable with it, but I'll let Anne Marie and Stefan weigh in if they'd like. No? Rich, anything you want to add on this one?
Nothing.
Okay, so this one did have a public hearing two weeks ago, so we can at this point approve this. At this point, I'll entertain a motion to approve the historic landmark preservation ordinance as presented. Motion by Stefan, second by Anne Marie. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, cheer votes aye, motion passes four zero. Item number C, communications commission. Again, this ordinance was forwarded from the Ordinance Committee to the Board of Selectmen in its current form. This did have a public hearing two weeks ago. There was no comment whatsoever on this. The Ordinance Committee feels that this ordinance is good to go. So does anyone have any comments on this one? Everyone is good? Okay, at the, at this point, I'll entertain a motion to approve the Public Safety Communications Committee ordinance as presented. Motion by Anne Marie, second by Stefan. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, cheer votes aye, motion passes four zero. And finally, D, emergency management director. Again, this ordinance was forwarded from the Ordinance Committee to the Board of Selectmen. Public hearing was held, again, there was no comment, any public comment that was made on this, and the Ordinance Committee feels that this ordinance as well is ready to be moved forward. So does anyone have any comments?
If I may, this is simply a minor stylistic change that I think would make it read slightly better. The very first sentence, "There shall be created an agency of town government to be known as emergency management." The second sentence, "The emergency management shall be under the supervision." I just think it reads a little better if it were to say, "The emergency management agency," because the first sentence refers to agency.
Okay.
I just think it's slightly awkward, but it's stylistic, not substantive.
We can make that change.
That change doesn't affect the process flow at all?
No, not at all. The charter actually allows the town council to make stylistic changes.
I was going to have to overrule you pretty fast.
That's right, yeah. All in favor? So, all right, so Ray, can you make that note, and we'll update that ordinance? Okay, so any other comments? All right, so then, we need to approve the ordinance as presented with the stylistic change recommended by town council. Motion by Stefan, second by Al. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, cheer votes aye, motion passes four zero. Okay, item number twelve, executive session. Are we going to executive session to discuss real estate, the property at one hundred Prospect Street? At this point, the board will invite town council, Richard Patralla, to join us in executive session, and we'll make a motion to go into executive session at seven forty-four p.m. Motion by Anne Marie. Second by Stefan.